Hello.
Al, make sure your mic is on.
Yeah, actually, everybody check your mics.
It is now. Thank you, sir.
Now you sound good.
I wouldn't go there.
Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to end this by reading, clarifying the plan that the planning commission is a recommended body for the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and various requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on June 7, 2022. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Mr. Will Butler to obtain a request form to speak. And we'll get into our agenda. Need approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Need approval of the current agenda has been read, I'm sure. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. On the new business, we got temporary use authorizations. Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a report of a temporary use authorization approved May 13, 2022, at 4223 Washington Road. This is the target site in Evans, currently zoned C2. They had a previous temporary use authorization approved for this staging area you see here in yellow. This was for an additional temporary use for some enclosed tents similar to the photo that they are using to store the coolers while they're working on the remodel. And again, this was approved on May 13.
This is for information only, so we don't need to vote it.
Correct.
Okay, the next item is Mr. Butler, plat for Bradley and Jeter.
No, sir, this is an individual plat. We're actually not creating any lots. We're dealing with some of the driveways on this plat. Shows the location of the property. Again, off of Nob Hill Farm Road, we're dealt with these two properties up here with their shared drives. We're dealing with the ones that are highlighted here this evening. This is individual plat. Again, what we're doing is we're removing their drive here and allowing them to have individual driveways. When this plat came out a couple of years ago, Nob Hill Farm is a collector road. So there's a provision to require having shared drives if necessary. At the time, that was what was agreed to. However, Nob Hill Farm Road is a pretty low, low-speed collector, you know, one that doesn't really warrant having to have shared drives in this situation. I see staff recommends approval of the individual plat to remove these driveway. Please sign for recommendation.
Any comments or questions? We have a motion to approve or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the Bradley and Jeter individual plat to remove the shared driveway requirements for 3731 and 3735 Nob Hill Farm Road.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, conceptual plan for Brooks Phase 2, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a conceptual plan for Phase 2 of the Brooks Townhouse Development off Columbia Road. Is the location of the property and the zoning. It is currently zoned TR Townhouse Residential. This is the existing phase of the Brooks, so this is at the back of that development off Columbia Road. The existing conditions of the site include a sewer line that is routing across the property that is to be relocated with the development as well as wetlands associated with two streams running into the existing pond on the site. The concept plan is for 17 additional units. The majority of these meet the county definition for townhouses, which requires at least three attached units. The exception is these two lots down in the corner. Now, TR does allow for two-family residential development, and these two units will be developed as a two-family residential unit, which means they will be on one lot that has to meet the requirements for R3A. The remainder of the site is fairly straightforward. It is an extension of a private road to a turnaround here at the Hammerhead. And this phase will also include construction of a walking trail and playground area, playground area being located here. That was originally included with the Phase 1 plans, but has not been built, so it will be included with this phase of the development. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Questions of the staff? Party? Have a motion to approve or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for the Brooks Phase 2 located off Columbia.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, next, Ms. Montgomery, preliminary plat for Canton Park.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Phase 3 of Canton Park located off Riverwatch Parkway, currently split-zoned TR Townhouse Residential and AR10 Apartment Residential. This shows the location of the site. You can see the majority of the phase we are dealing with is AR10-zoned. That does allow for townhouse development as well as apartments. And this phase includes 20 additional lots with a minimum lot size of 1,700 square feet and an average lot size of 1,850 square feet. There is a minimum setback of 20 feet from the back of the curb of the private road to accommodate the driveways. These are attached units, so side setbacks are zero feet. 4.9 acres of open space are provided in this development. This includes the active common area, which will be designed and approved under a separate plan. It is located up here. Per county code, this area has to include play equipment for children as part of its design and must be complete prior to 50% of the building construction for this final phase. And staff is recommending approval.
Any questions of the staff? Not to hear a motion to accept or deny this preliminary plat, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Canton Park Phase 3 located off Riverwatch Parkway.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. The final plat for Tankersley Farms.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for seven lots off Cobham Road, currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. Is the location of the property off Cobham Road and Moon Town Road, and again, currently zoned RA. This lot, this plat creates seven additional lots with a minimum lot size of three acres and an average lot size of 4.87 acres. Four of the lots have direct access from Moon Town Road, while three of the lots share an access easement. Three lots in the back. Setbacks are required to be 75 feet from the right of way of Cobham Road and 45 feet from the right of way of Moon Town Road. Side setbacks are a minimum of 10 feet and rear setbacks are a minimum of 25 feet. And staff is recommending approval of the final plat.
Obtain a motion to accept or deny Tankersley Farm.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Tankersley Farm located off Cobham Road.
Second.
In discussion of this, Ms. Montgomery, this is one, it's not been too long ago when it came to us. And it's on the I wasn't able to row next to it.
I mean, it's on Moon Town Road here. This is Tom Bartles and Cobb.
Tom Bartles is what I'm thinking.
Thinking at the other end.
I'm thinking about, yeah, I'm thinking about that one.
Yeah, at the other end of Tom Bartles.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Motion and second's already been made, so.
Right. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, now we're getting into the public hearing section of our agenda. Montgomery, you take the first one.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from R3 Single Family Residential to P1 Professional for an adult daycare for less than seven adults. The property is 4031 Riverwatch Parkway and is located on the north side of Riverwatch Parkway and is currently zoned R3 Single Family Residential, as are all of the immediately surrounding properties. This is the aerial of the site showing the existing house and a site photo of the existing site. You can see there is an existing driveway and parking pad off to the side, as well as this gravel area that may accommodate some additional parking. The applicants have submitted architectural drawings showing the proposed improvements to the house to accommodate the proposed use. The intent would be to have up to six adults in the house during the hours of roughly 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There would be at least two staff on site at all times to monitor the residents, one of which would be a nurse. If the rezoning is approved, their next steps are the site plan and the building permits and middles. So these drawings for the inside of the house would be for the building permit. There would also be site improvements required as far as upgrading the parking to provide the requisite number of paved off-street parking spaces, widening the driveway on Riverwatch Parkway, installing buffers adjacent to the property lines for all of the, all three of them, since all of the property lines are adjacent to single-family residences. And there would also be on the building side additional requirements for the kitchen and for a new certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal. In terms of the future development map, this is on the Riverwatch Parkway professional corridor. This corridor is intended for professional uses, particularly on lots that are large enough to be developed as professional uses. In that respect, this lot does meet that standard. It is a larger lot, almost an acre, and a fairly wide lot and deep lot, which does give them the space to install the buffers and the parking and the other requirements for professional development. That is, as compared to some of these other lots on Riverwatch that are much shallower and smaller and are maybe harder to make that conversion. In addition, with the P1 zoning, the intent of the P1 district is to provide for development of structures for professional services, which do not generate large volumes of traffic, noise, or other harmful effects to adjoining residents. Therefore, even if the use were to change, other P1 uses are intended to be compatible with residential use. The use that is proposed is one that could actually operate in a residential district. If the applicant were to be living on the property, this could run as a home occupation. In this case, they are not intending to live. They are just intending to operate the business, so they are requesting the rezoning. And staff is recommending approval.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission issue? Come to the microphone, please. State your name and address if you would. I should do my. I end. Anybody have any questions for?
ADA stuff and all, obviously, for that. Nothing I remember seeing. You know, wheelchair-type access and what have you.
All the plans. I ended. Inside. Our films.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this issue? Now we'll close that part of the meeting. I'd like a motion to approve or disapprove of this issue.
Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove. RZ 22. Zoning from R3 to P. Watch Parkway.
Yes, second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next item, Mr. Butler.
This is a request for a major pod revision at 935 Ellis Lane, currently zoned, planning development. This is a revision to revise building setbacks for a proposed pool house. This is the location of the property, intersection of Ellis Lane, a little Ellis circle over in Riverwood. Again, the property is currently zoned, planning development, has everything around it for Riverwood. And area view of the property. Also, the existing site, the pool house would be in this general location here. And also the plat of the property. Partially here. Just, it shows the proposed plan. The applicant and staff have met, and we need to postpone the request at this point to kind of work out several, I don't want to say issues, but several kind of design elements of this. So again, this plan will change. So it's one of those that we'll go ahead and show it to you, but again, I'll probably move around a little bit at the absolute minimum. Next, we have the elevation of the proper, of the proposed pool house and also the rear elevation. And again, staff recommends to postpone this request to the June 2 meeting. Please, staff recommendation?
We need a motion to postpone this.
Yeah, you'll need to open the public hearing and at least hear if anybody in the audience would like to speak either for or against this, close the public hearing, and then you can make a motion.
Anybody here would like to speak for this issue? Anybody like to speak to oppose it? Public hearing is closed, and I'd like a motion to postpone this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ 22-0505, major pud revision at 93 Ellis Lane to June 2.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Ms. Mystery. Change of condition?
Yes, sir. This is a change of conditions on 420 Lewiston Road on 1.619 acres. Current zoning is CC, and it's a partially developed site. The change of conditions to allow a separate sign on the Pinnacle Bank parcel. Here is the location on the on the east of Lewiston Road. There's a zoning, it's a CC zoning. And here's a close-up of the aerial that shows a house, but it's partially developed, so Popeyes is actually already built on this site, and the Pinnacle Bank is going to go here. Here's the plat of the property. And this property, when it was rezoned, had zoning conditions, and one of them was that it would only have one sign on the full CC parcel, which at the moment Popeyes has a sign that's under a permit. And the design requirement was, would meet this example that was presented for the Kroger master sign plan. Here are the site photographs. You can see that Lewiston Road up to your right-hand side here is quite a high elevation there from the parcel. And this is the shared driveway that goes to the Pinnacle Bank parcel and Popeyes. So the site for the bank is ready for construction, and this is the view also across Lewiston Road, where you can see the other commercial parcels, and it is part of a road widening project as well. So there's a lot of construction out there. This is an aerial that shows the rezoning actions. This is a useful tool that staff use, but also it's available for the public as well on the website. This shows that there was several rezonings, change of conditions, and master sign plan revisions in the area. So this is a request that's similar to ones before. This was the 2015 approval for the master sign plan for the Kroger parcel. And these were the recommended designs of the signs that they used. In 2016, we actually had a request to change, change conditions on the Kroger parcel where the smaller signs, they wanted to change the peak design into a flat top, but that was recommended for disapproval. And the applicants changed the design to a peaked top, and then the application was withdrawn. So going back to the pinnacle parcel, you've got the building proposed here. The shared drive comes in this way, and the Popeyes sign is under construction right here. This is the Pinnacle Bank site plan and the proposed freestanding sign you can see proposed next to the shared driveway entrance here. It is about 300 feet away from the Popeyes sign, which is way over the code requirement of 50 feet. And with the retention pond that's to the north side on this side. Not showing. Maybe, yeah. It is about 150 feet away from the closest residential, so there shouldn't be any nuisance to residential properties with regards to lighting or visibility. These are the bank elevations that were approved by the Planning Commission on April the 22nd. Shows quite a modern design. And these are the photographs of the approved signs in the area that followed the master sign plan requirements. On the same side of Lewiston Road as the Pinnacle Bank, there was AutoZone completed and Longhorns. They actually went with signage that was similar in architecture, but that zoning did not include a condition about the sign designs, except just the height requirements. This is the Popeyes sign that's under construction. And this is the sign that Pinnacle Bank have submitted to us for consideration. It matches their architecture. They're using similar materials and coordinates pretty well. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions that accept planning condition number six, or conditions from rezoning file shall apply, and the signed permit shall include the monument sign design as presented with this application. That concludes staff recommendation.
Is anyone here that would like to speak for this issue? State your name and address, please.
My name is Dustin Young. I reside at 5314 Magnolia Lane in Evans. I am a employee of Pinnacle Bank. I'm the market manager of the Augusta Market. And when we purchased this lot, developer of Popeyes and I, we're discussing the location of the shared sign that was approved under the Kroger master plan requirements. And we were running into a lot of challenges placing a shared sign near the middle of our lots due to fire hydrants and utility issues. So the Popeyes developer has decided that he wants to place the sign at the intersection of Autumn Trail, which is the furthest point away from the shared driveway, which leads you into the Pinnacle Lot. In addition to that, as you've seen from the presentation, the proposed sign that we have does match the architectural design of our building, so we think it will be a better presentation for the area. Additionally, as Nana just mentioned, to the north of our property is the Georgia Department of Transportation detention pond. Popeyes is to the south, so there's no additional development that's going to come, and we're about 300 feet away from the other proposed sign. Overall, we think it adds value to us as a business owner to have our own sign that matches the architectural design of our building, and we think it'd be more pleasing on the eye for the general public in that area.
Have you got any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone here would like to speak against this issue? Close the hearing for a vote. Like to see a motion to approve or deny things or conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 22-0506, change of conditions at 420 Lewiston Road. Allow additional freestanding sign and allow.
Have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next one is Ms. Montgomery, special revision.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major revision to the existing S1 special zoning at 949 Apling Harlem Road. Is the location of the property at the intersection of Apling Harlem Road, Fairview Drive, and Old Union Road with Robert Moore Road to the east. And this property is currently zoned S1. It was rezoned S1 in 2014 and has had a couple revisions since then, most recently earlier this year of to add the motor coach sales business as a permanent allowed use on the site. Now, this is the aerial of the property, showing the existing building and parking and storage areas and the existing site. The current request is in regards to a business license request that was received in April for Horizon Towing. The original S1 zoning was approved with fairly specific conditions that fairly narrowly restricted the allowed uses. The towing business was not one of those allowed uses listed. Those included the charter bus service, associated bus storage, and bus maintenance for the fleet. So the addition of Horizon Towing to the property did require the additional S1 revision. There are two tow trucks associated with this business. Primarily, these would be used to tow the vehicles for Horizon itself. However, they would also offer towing services to other companies, although those vehicles would be towed back to repair shops or back to their owners and not to this property. There are therefore no changes proposed to the property in conjunction with this revision, which means it should not have any additional impact on any of the surrounding properties. This property is located in the rural character area on the future development map. This area is intended to provide for low-density, single-family residential development and agricultural and forestry uses. The existing and proposed uses are not exactly in line with this character area, but they are existing in this location for the most part. And the proposed request is a moderate expansion of the existing use and not likely to cause any additional issues. However, we do have proposed conditions, clarifying that the rest of the conditions of approval will still apply with the one modification to allow Horizon Towing and to clarify that this approval does not extend to any other towing or record services or storage of any impounded vehicles. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Anyone here would like to speak for this issue? Come to the microphone, please. Name and address, please.
Alvin Harris operates the Horizon Motor Coach there in Harlem. And the purpose of this quest is to allow us to be able to mainly use the vehicles to tow our own vehicles for Horizon, but we have had requests to help other vehicles, help other companies like in our area only because we have a special vehicle for towing motor coaches. Companies that are in our area don't actually tow motor coaches or that type of vehicle. Us, these motoring have shared with us that he'll help us, but he don't for that type of towing. Harlem, just recently, we had to help Harlem buy a truck, first ladder truck. Harlem, because it's a special type of equipment. This allows us to separate the billing from Horizon Motor. The Horizon Towing.
Any questions? It's a good deed for Harlem, didn't you?
Yes, sir. I think so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone here against this issue? Make a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve. File RZ 22-7, major towing business Harlem Road.
Have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor of seeing if I'm raising your right hand? Next item on the agenda is Ms. Montgomery, conditional use for daycare.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use for a daycare at 208 Flowing Wells Road. This is the location of the property on the east side of Flowing Wells Road at its intersection with Brockwood Street. And it is currently zoned PDD Plan Development District. This is essentially a professional district in terms of the uses currently allowed on the site. In regards to the the request, a daycare is allowed up for up to seven children in the current zoning. However, the applicant is proposing to have up to 30 children, and a daycare for more than seven children does require the conditional use. This is the aerial of the site that shows the two existing buildings on the property. And the applicant is proposing to use only one of the buildings for the daycare. The other both buildings are actually currently vacant. We can see there are several existing driveways and some parking on the site already. There will be improvements to these required before a business can operate on the site. This is the existing site, the existing building. Per the applicant, the building is just over 2,000 square feet. There is a code requirement for at least 35 square feet of indoor space for each child served. The 2,000 square foot building very easily meets that for the 30 children proposed. The fire marshal also has separate requirements for occupancy for a daycare. They will need to submit drawings by an architect to verify they meet the fire code requirements and to verify the square footage for the the new certificate of occupancy for the use. Some of the concerns that have been with the the road construction. This is the road construction plan for this area. The two driveways circled in red will be improved with the road construction project. So as part of the Flowing Wells widening, the most relevant one is that this driveway on Flowing Wells will be widened and improved with the road widening project itself. In terms of the site plan, they are required also to have 100 square feet of outdoor play area per child served. The area that you see outlined in yellow there, based on aerial measurements, is about 5,000 square feet. So that does exceed that requirement. You can see on this plan that it is showing the Flowing Wells Road driveway as the main entrance to the site. There were concerns previously. Brockwood Street previously had signs on it that it was closed during school drop off and pickup hours. After some research by traffic engineering, that was those signs have been removed, so that Brockwood Street is a public road with no road closures on it. So that is no longer an issue. However, the driveway on Flowing Wells is not particularly up to commercial standards. So traffic engineering has added conditions regarding access to the site, particularly that this driveway cannot be used for the commercial business until it is widened and improved, either as part of that road widening project or by the applicant or property owner. Instead, the Brockwood Street driveway is the the preferred access to the site. Now, it will need to be widened. Currently, it is one lane, but for commercial use, it does need to be widened to at least 20 feet to provide for two-way traffic in and out of the site. Additionally, the parking would need to be addressed. There is a requirement for a minimum of seven parking spaces for this use based on the number of children proposed to be served. Per county code, those spaces cannot back out onto a public road, which means that some of the the existing spaces, particularly these spaces here, probably are not going to meet that requirement. The property is also very close to meeting the 12-month lapse in operations to address non-conformities on the site. By the time this actually gets to the Board of Commissioners, they will have passed that 12-month mark. So certainly before a business would be operating here, they will be past that. That means that the entire site needs to be brought into compliance before a business can operate on this property. For this site, that includes the parking that we have been discussing, the widening of the driveways, ensuring that the buffer is in place as approved with the PDD, and the landscape strips along Flowing Wells Road and Brockwood Street. Now, obviously, Flowing Wells Road is currently under construction. So we do have a condition regarding delaying installation of that landscape strip until the construction is complete. This is a photo of the proposed play area. Now, before they can operate as a daycare, this area does have to be fenced per county code requirements with a fence a minimum of four feet tall. In terms of the future development map, this parcel is located within the neighborhood's character area. This area is intended to provide for primarily single-family residential use and civic uses, including community centers, libraries, and schools. It is also adjacent to the Martinez Activity Center, which is a intended to provide for shops and restaurants and more commercial-type uses. Under the existing zoning, this property could be a professional or medical office, a personal care home, a school of the arts, which would include things like a karate studio or a personal service use such as a salon or indoor animal care. The proposed use of a daycare and preschool is similar in nature to schools and other civic uses that are envisioned and allowed for the neighborhood's character area, and is not likely to impact the adjacent properties more than the already allowed uses. Additionally, this does provide sort of a civic service and use of for the surrounding neighborhoods. And therefore, the proposed addition of the daycare as an allowed use is in compliance with the future development map. And staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Again, the delay of the installation of the landscape strip along Flowing Wells Road until the widening project is complete. And then the conditions from traffic regarding access. So not using the Flowing Wells driveway until it's improved, either under the widening project or by the applicant. And widening of the existing driveway on Brockwood Street, we should fix that, to a minimum of 20 feet to accommodate two-way traffic. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue?
Let me ask a question, staff, real quick. Can you go back to the playground picture? Go on, I'm sorry, to the
Drawing?
Yeah, outline. Thank you, the drawing.
Line.
Yeah, the yellow line. So I understand correctly, if the entrance in the back corner, back right corner on the bottom, they're going to have to cut into that playground area and put more driveway, right?
Yes, so they will have to widen that driveway probably approximately 10 feet. But keep in mind, they're about 2,000 square feet over the code requirement for that play area. So I would not expect that that would reduce that play area that amount.
Okay, yeah, I saw that. Just want to clarify. All right.
Does anyone here would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Give us your name and address, please.
My address is 881 Rolo Domino Circle, Evans, Georgia 308. I have met with Ms. Danielle requirements that the county is asking me to do. I'm willing to do it. I waited for the sign to be down so the road could actually be open. I called around to make sure who owned the sign, because before nobody knew why the sign was there or who put it there in my previous application that I submitted for this property. Currently, the site is able to keep seven in order for me to be able to meet my landlord's requirement or his. I would need more children than that because of that. And also because of my demand for more children, my location. I have a waiting list for this location. And I'm just really thought on the program, thought on our new adventure, bring it up to code. Part of it so I can start.
Any questions?
Yeah, so you've already got more than 30 applicants for the for the program?
Our waiting list, our our current waiting list is over 60.
Now, that's for this location. Should it get approved? Or is that for your other location as well?
It is. We're taking a waiting list. All daycares in our area, Columbia County, have waiting lists. I don't know if it's a shortage. It's a shortage of daycares because a lot of us didn't survive the pandemic. I did. I was blessed to survive it. But with that, my business has grown, so that's why I got this building. It's more accommodating to me. My staff can go back and forth. You know, I'm not out of reach from it. It's a five-minute walk from other center. However, the waiting list, people call us every day. We almost get cussed out because we can't add any more people to the waiting list because they're not going to get in there for 60 kids. So what some of us have been doing is like funneling out calls. Like if somebody say Tara, I might call her and say, hey, do you have room for a three-year-old? And if she does, I say, okay, well, you can go to this this center. They have three-year-olds. So that's how we've been working together in the community as daycare owners and professionals, trying to make sure that our kids are in safe daycares that are up to West County regulations.
Think there'd be any problems with traffic the way it is? I notice a lot of bad traffic already. Think it would create a traffic problem?
No, sir, I don't. I plan to busy as hours of Flowing Wells Road is, I would say from eight, five, maybe? I would think that is that. I did my hours from seven, which is before that time, and I did it after the rush hour. So that way it's limited traffic. Parents aren't rushed to come get the kids, you know. I think with the widening of the road, that helped. I think with the sign coming down, that definitely helped. I think with the guys working every day that they can to widen the road and allow car access and widen it, that improves it all. I think whoever designed it or the engineer that came up with that.
Any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does anyone here that would like to speak in opposing this issue? We'll close this issue. Is there a motion to approve or deny this conditional use?
I make a motion to RZ 22-508, conditional use, 208.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of disapproval, seeing if I'm raising your right hand? Anyone opposed? Last item on the agenda is Ms. Nana Mistrey with variations to section 996, Evans Town.
Yes, sir. This is a variation application for multiple parcels on Washington Road and Roundtree Way. It's on 3.2 acres, and the zoning is C2 general commercial. The variation is to the Evans Town Center code. This is the location between Washington and Roundtree. It's going to be the new Lidl grocery store. This is the zoning map that shows the C2. There's the S1 church right opposite, and there's several residential properties around here. Here's a close-up of the aerial and the plant. This is the the site plan that actually was approved this week with all the technical requirements for the for the civil engineer. And the retaining wall that's on this side has already been submitted and approved as well. So there's been several design discussions about the the building. The building permit drawings came in a little while ago. Part of the discussions were that there was some CMU walls and some exposed concrete. This first elevation here that you can see would face the residential properties to the to the east. It showed CMU block, and then the clouded area at the top, that would be exposed mechanical units, and the parapet wall was was a lower flat wall. And all of those things have been discussed with the architect for the changes. So after several discussions, these are the current elevations that we've received the variation for. The architect did go ahead and include several panels in the darker colors, which is the the brick. Brick panels, there's a stone base to it, and there's composite panels and stucco as well. This is the elevation, part of the elevation that's facing Washington Road, and it is the increased glazing. So you can see all of this area is glazed area. The Evans Town Center code allows 25% of the elevation as glazing, and this is approximately 45%. The the reason that the architect gave us is that Lidl wants a clear visibility into the the store from the parking lot, and that's the request for the increased glazing. We've had several requests for variations for increased glazing in last few years in the Evans Town Center. We have mostly approved, approved them with some requirements on the architectural side. The bottom section, this is the loading dock elevation, shows where the the door is. That was on the original site plan that we had, so we were aware of that was the location it would be coming in. These are the the current renderings that have been submitted. It shows the glazed area, the different materials. It's a lot more in context with what we approve in Evans Town Center for new buildings. And the neutral colors is what we recommend as well. This is the technically what is the rear, and it's facing the residential properties. So now you have the raised parapets. You have a variation in the heights of the back elevation, so it's just not flat. The mechanical units are now screened, and there is a lot more interest in the the wall itself. And this plan shows where the overhead door will be located off on the side of Roundtree Way. And this this plan is the the proposed landscaping. It does show that there's quite a lot of landscaping on the side where Roundtree Way. So most of that is going to be screened anyway. And then you've also got the landscaping all along the back wall in front of the the rendering that you just saw. These are the site views as existing. An overall staff doesn't have any concerns with the proposal, but we do have a recommendation with with a condition that the window signage allowance be 10% of the glazing area for each elevation. That concludes staff recommendation.
Questions, staff?
The the 10%, that's a max, right? Not like they have to do 10%.
Right, it's an allowance of 10% because the code actually requires allows 50%.
Anyone here like to speak for this issue? Anyone would like to speak against it? Close this issue. All in favor?
In motion.
Excuse me. Getting ahead of myself.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve. File V8-501, Evans Town, Play District, Washington Road, 541, 545, and 551.
They're second?
Thank you.
All in favor of seeing if I'm raising your right hand? Concludes our business for this meeting. Is any staff or commissioner comments? We have a motion to
Excuse me. There is an opportunity for public comment if anybody would like to address anything that wasn't on the agenda. I'd go to the next item then, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to close the
Second.
All in favor of seeing if I'm raising your right hand? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.